I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October the 25th, 2023. I will note for the record that all three members of the Board of Commissioners are present in the Nat'U Hill Room.
I would like to move to amend our agenda to add item P to update, an update to the ARPA plan.
Second.
Thank you. Can we just vote on something? We don't need to have discussion on adding that, right? So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. We'll go on to our public statement. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And with that, we'll move on to department updates. And I believe that we have Ms. Ford here from the Health Department. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Jamie Ford, the Administrative Assistant for the Monroe County Health Department. And the update that I have for you today is, I'll just share my screen here, my apologies, is to update you on how you can find the COVID vaccination information for where you can actually find it and what specific, I'm so sorry. There we go. What specific vaccinations you can find, where you can find it, contact information, that kind of thing. So, if you go to our, you know, the main Monroe County website, if you go up to Community up here, Health Department, it's a bit buried unfortunately. And then if you scroll down over here on the side, we have Topics of Interest. If you click on COVID-19, Coronavirus-19, COVID-19 vaccine information, this link right here, this blue one, it has been updated. So, if you click on it, it's a PDF, and we will be updating this weekly. You can see it has everything, most of this came from vaccines.gov. A lot of it was, vaccines.gov is not accurate, which is why I will be calling and trying to verify this weekly. There's a lot of stuff, for example, there on vaccines.gov, it says that there are a couple of places that have Novavax. None of them actually do yet. So, this is where, so you can either go by, you know, pharmacy, whatever's closest to you, or you can go look by the vaccination type and see whether it's in stock. So, but again, as always, definitely call and check beforehand. Sometimes they might allow walk-ins, sometimes you might need to make an appointment. But yeah, like I said, we will be updating this weekly.
Excellent. I like it that you have Spanish version, too.
I will have to, I'm not fluent in Spanish, so I will be working on that, too. And just so you know, like, there's a lot of stuff that is outdated on the website. I currently have posted notes. I'm starting to go through and see what's actually linked to what page and where's everything's buried at. So, we will be work on updates. There's, our website is a behemoth of legendary proportions. So, we will be working on updating it and making sure everything's currently up to date and, you know, especially with COVID, we'll keep that up to date as possible. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Any comments or questions?
Here we go. Thank you for doing this. It was something that I had, I'd sent Lori an email about, I think at the end of last week, because it was, you know, as somebody who knows how to find this information, I couldn't find it anywhere. So, I really appreciate that this was put together and that you're going to do a weekly update. It's really great for your residents, so thank you.
Definitely. One of the other things that we were, kind of had in progress, it's definitely a little slow going, one, because I'm not certified in GIS, so I'm kind of learning as I go. But with John's help and then now Rena, now that she started, we're actually working on kind of creating an interactive, more up-to-date, informative kind of GIS experience website kind of a thing, similar to what they actually use. There's a way to have calendar updates, so like our DIS, when they go do outreach testing, we can put that on there. When the Purdue Extension has events about, you know, nutrition and all that kind of stuff, we can add that on there. And then we can also have like Department FAQ's, the Food Inspection Reports. It's very ugly at the moment, just because I'm still learning how to make it pretty, but we'll have those mapped out and have that updated. So, it's slow going, just because I don't know how to do it and I'm learning, but we are working on that, so that way our main website will be kind of a reference, and then we have the interactive, which is more, kept more up to date. So, that's all I have right now, sorry.
Do we have any similar information on the RSV vaccine?
I do believe, one of the Krogers that I had contacted, the Kroger pharmacies, I believe they have it. They were actually asking if we have it. I believe our public health clinic does have it in stock. I'm not sure how much or for what age group, but I do believe they have it. I can definitely double-check on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other department that has an update for us? Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good.
Just real quick, a little change of pace here. Just wanted to bring you an update from the merit side of the House, as opposed to the jail this time. The Sheriff's Office just recently received in five new police vehicles. I think we got one more on the way. I just wanted to stop in on behalf of the Sheriff and thank the Commissioners for making that happen, and I want to particularly thank Angie and Richard. And I know Richard has exercised the patience of a saint as we go through this process with vehicles. So, again, just a real quick thank you for seeing an issue that needed to be addressed and addressing it, and it's very, very helpful for our merit staff to receive those new safe vehicles. So, much appreciated.
I actually saw that on the claims when I was reading through, so.
Yeah, it's, very few things are more important than a police officer on the road to know something. That's their office, and it's, they're wrapped in the safety of that. And as those vehicles get miles on them and get older, they tend to deteriorate, so it's not gone unnoticed. Those guys are very excited, so I wanted to thank you so much.
Sure, thanks. Thanks for coming over. Is there any other department that has an update today? Well, I'd like to give an update on the jail. I'd like to repeat for the public that we have not identified a location yet, and we are continuing to explore different options. We did receive a 245-page report with a Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the Thompson property, which we are currently in the process of trying to dig through, and we're still awaiting a geotechnical report, I believe. We are pulling together a webpage on the county's website to keep the community apprised of our progress as we pull different things together. Also, we hope next year to get the National Association of Mental Illness, Indiana, to come and work with us on using what's called a SIMS model to, gee, that's not our screen. Wonder what's going on here in front of us, sorry, to look for gaps that we have here in the community, so that we can start to work on filling those gaps, especially with regard to treatment for mental illness and substance use disorders. And the connection that we have with the criminal justice, those have with the criminal justice system. I will say, too, that last Thursday and Friday, we had Jamie Whitaker down from Mental Health of America, Indiana. He is the Forensics Program Vice President for that group, and he was here to talk with us about the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program. Finally remembered that one. And trying to get that here into our community, so we'll be moving forward on that. We have to create some other entities to make that possible. And finally, we have planned a visit to the new Jefferson County Jail. This jail is not yet open, but it will be soon, and we have invited to go along with us some of the county staff, as well as members of the Sheriff's Department and the County Council. So, this is just part of our due diligence in terms of what we think we would like to see in a jail. So, is there any other comments on that from my colleagues?
Not at this time. No, I just think it's important to note that there are multiple things going on at one time, and we'll keep the public updated.
Great. And we have some, an item about the jail on our agenda later, so we'll have that to share with people, too. So, why don't we move on to a public comment? This is for items not on our agenda. You have three minutes. Please give us your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. I can't see the attendees, TSD, if that, you could share that? Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
I move approval of the minutes for October 11th, 2023.
Second.
Is, were there any corrections or comments, updates? I didn't have any either. So, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of October 11th, 2023 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable, October 25th, 2023, and payroll from October 20th, 2023.
Second.
Hello, Ms. Miller.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for October 25th, 2023 totals $3,915,714.42. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for October 20th, 2023 includes $1,625,817.18 in direct costs, and the remaining $651,424.36 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,277,241.54.
Questions or comments, my colleagues?
No, I don't.
None? As I said, I noticed that we paid for additional sheriff's vehicles. That was, that was great. Are there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the approval of the claims docket accounts payable, October 25th, 2023, and payroll, October 20th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we have a monthly report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court. And with that, and from the treasurer.
That's a pleasure.
Yes.
All right. I move approval of BTEC Fire and Security for Sheriff's Department Front Secure Door, fund named Humble Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, in the amount of $2,925.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by BTEC Fire and Security in the amount of $2,925 to update the control software on the Sheriff's Department Front Secure Door. This is pretty straightforward. Currently, they're using an older system, and this will help to avoid working out of two different systems and bring everything current.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Now, the contract seemed very straightforward, so I appreciate you doing this. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on approval of the BTEC Fire and Security for the Sheriff's Department Front Door, Front Secure Door contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you.
Next item.
Move approval of TransUnion TLO Service Agreement for Public Defender, fund named County General, Fund Number 1,000, in the amount of $75 per month.
Second.
And we have Ms. Stuffel here with us. Good morning.
Good morning. So, we're just asking for you all to approve the contract.
Yep, please speak into the, sorry. The people on, virtually can't hear you very well, if you don't.
We're just asking for you to approve the contract for a software program. And if you all have any questions, I brought somebody that would be actually able to answer all those questions for you. It's Chris Saunders. He's one of our investigators in the Public Defender's Office.
Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't at this time.
I do have a question. The $75 is the minimum, but it could be higher. Do you ever, do you think you'll ever go above that amount? So, if we, do we need to change this dollar amount here?
Um, no. Based on, from what I've seen and what the state is currently using, they have additional package plans if you want additional, like, add-ons to the software.
Okay.
But based on what we're using it for, we're pretty much just going to stay at that minimum level.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I had already emailed this to Ms. Stuffel, but this is kind of an open-ended contract at this point. We can, it can be for a year, for two years. How does it get ended, and either side can end it correctly? Is that correct?
So, I asked that, I sent that question to the salesman, and he says, I think, what his response was, is that it's a year minimum, and then we can end it at any time if we're unhappy with that.
Any further questions or comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of contract with TransUnion TLO Service Agreement for the Public Defender's Office, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you for coming over this morning.
Thank you all very much.
Next item.
I move approval of the E-Image Data Scan Pro Advantage Membership Extended Agreement, fund name Recorders Records Perpetuation, Fund Number 1189, in the amount of $995, and that is for five years.
Second.
And we have Recorder Swain here with us. Good morning.
Good morning. So, back in April of this year, we purchased a new microfilm scanner called a Scan Pro. We moved the one that we had in our office over to Archives to replace outdated technology there and put the new one in our main office because of volume. At that time, we were under agreement with a three-year factory warranty, and we were given a six-month trial membership in the Advantage Membership Program. So, the six months is up, and I'm coming to you this morning at this time to ask to extend that Advantage Membership Agreement.
Excellent. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
No, just to clarify, it's $995 a year for five years?
No, it's $995 for all five years.
Total for four or five years.
Right, it's $249 per year.
Okay.
So, over the five years, we would save $250.
Okay. Because the document we have is really about the purchase of the equipment, so it doesn't really fit, so thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the E-Image Data Scan Pro Advantage Membership Extended Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of the Matrix Integration Cabling Proposal for Jail Office Changes, fund named Humble Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, not to exceed $725.
Second.
And we have Mr. Krone here to tell us about it.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Krone, TSD Department. This one's pretty straightforward, too. Probably the cheapest one you'll even approve this morning. So, they relocated the finance manager office inside the jail to another room inside the jail. One of the functions they need is fax capability. There's no fax line in this new space, so this is just moving the fax line, or actually doing a new run for a fax line from the switch closet all the way into the new office space for the financial officers.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I talked with the new financial officer last evening, and he's thrilled to have this new office, and so thank you for making this happen. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Matrix Integration Cabling Proposal for the Jail Office Changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Krone. Okay, next item.
I move approval of the 2024 Anthem Medical Plans Summary for Monroe County Employees, fund named Self-Inurance, Fund Number 4,700, with various amounts.
Second.
And we have Ms. Hinsonstein here.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the annual renewal of our Anthem stuff. So, the first, there's many pages. The first several of those are the benefit summaries, so they just outline all of the coverage for each of our plans. None of that has changed from what you had approved last year. And then I think the next item after that is the Stop Loss Agreement. And so, that's just our, the stop loss is the protection for us against those high claims. And then the final thing for Anthem is the Administrative Services Agreement, and that's for them to, the administrative costs for managing our plan.
Questions or comments?
I'll have to admit that when it comes to insurance, I think of it as stuff.
I think most of us do.
You're not riveted by it? Oh, my gosh.
No, I'm not.
Commissioner Thomas.
I will just say that there is a lot of information.
Yes.
And what that tells me is that you all have spent a lot of time on this, and we appreciate the hard work that goes into finalizing all of these documents, so thank you.
Yeah, I think I would give credit to Angie there for working with our benefit brokers at Apex to, you know, doing a good job at keeping our costs from increasing too much. I think in, just in general, insurance costs are going up more and more since COVID, and we've done a very good job of keeping things pretty much status quo.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy.
Yeah. Being self-insured acts adds an extra layer of effort on everybody's part. And just to remind county employees, I know you've sent out multiple announcements, but open enrollment starts October 31st. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the 2024 Anthem Medical Plan Summary for Monroe County Employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the MetLife Apex Benefits Service Disclosure Authorization, fund named Self-Inurance, Fund Number 4,700, 4,700, in the amount of a 2.5% credit.
Second.
Yeah, so this is a new one for me. We are switching our dental plan from Delta to MetLife, and MetLife receives what are referred to as tech subsidies that they can pass along to benefit administrators. And so, Apex is one of our benefit administrators, and this, Apex is really managing this and communicating with me. And so, what MetLife will do is send that to Apex to offset the cost of the benefit administration through Apex.
Any comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Just another way to keep costs down.
Yes.
Which is, again, we're grateful for.
Mm-hmm.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the MetLife Apex Benefits Service Disclosure Authorization. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of MetLife Steel Benefits Service Disclosure Authorization, fund named Self-Inurance, Fund Number 4,700, in the amount of a 3% credit.
Second.
This is the same thing, just with a different benefit administrator. So, Steel Benefits is the company that manages the website that we use to, for people to enroll in benefits. They also manage all of the files that go to our various insurance carriers and make sure that all of that information is correct. So, MetLife is gonna, this is agreement between them to send that, to offset those costs.
Great. Any comments or questions? It's more insurance, come on. I could even try. Commissioner Thomas.
No, no questions, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on MetLife Steel Benefits Service Disclosure Authorization. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thanks.
Next item.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-44 to amend Monroe County Code by adding Chapter 252, Collective Bargaining with Highway Workers.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell here.
Yes, and this kind of is an outcrop of your next agenda item, which is the, which is a highway collective bargaining agreement. When we were, started the negotiations, we saw that our current code recognized the merit deputies and the jail collective bargaining agreement, but there wasn't anything with the highway union in our Monroe County Code that recognized them, that it was always done through the contract. They indicated that they would prefer it in the code. I would, I would prefer it in the code as well, so we just make sure we have them all uniform and recognize them the same way. And so, this is just kind of taking a couple of the provisions that were previously in our, in our code, which says who's in the union, who, and those kind of things, and just putting it, and formally recognizing it in our Monroe County Code.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Any public comment on this item? Since I was out there with you for part of the discussion, I think this is very reasonable, So, I did ask for a public comment, right?
No.
Oh, public comment, please. We're flying through these agenda items, so. Seeing none, a call for a vote on ordinance 2023-44 to amend the Monroe County Code by adding Chapter 252, Collective Bargaining with Highway Workers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Highway Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Again, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is materially the same agreement we've had with the Highway Garage for a number of years. There were some changes made. I guess if you looked at the previous contract, you could tell when different attorneys handled the highway agreement, because they, some would use supervisor, some would use management, and those kind of things. So, we kind of made that much more uniform. I think we took out the references to the ASME at the request of the, of the union members. And we, I think the biggest change in my mind is we typically had these contracts to be four to five years. They requested it to be two years, and that, and it made sense from our perspective, given the changing nature of vehicle fuel.
Mm-hmm.
Because we are moving from petroleum-based auto to, it appears to me, an electric base. And we thought, given how the funding flows through MVH, that made sense to us as well. And so, those, and we recognized that they're going on the AOD system as all county employees, so we wanted to make sure the contract was in conformance with that. I think the other, probably the only other major change, and I don't even consider this very major, is we, when the Highway Department had implemented some, some thoughts as when it comes to call-out time, and when people don't respond to call-out time, and putting a little bit language that essentially says, if you get called three times and you choose not to come any of those three times, and that affects your ability to be on that list. I think that's really the only change, so it's essentially the previous agreement moving forward with some corrections, and it took us a while to get there.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
No, I, I think my only comment would be, is that I appreciate that there's a table of contents, but the article numbers don't make, don't really help. So, next time around, if it could say, you know, Article 16 about allowances and whatever it might be, if you could give a little more info, I think that would be really helpful. But it makes sense, it's very clearly written, so I appreciate that a lot, because I know that's the hardest part. So, thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
I can send you that table of contents, because I made myself one. No, I want to thank Jeff and Angie and the Collective Bargaining Unit for working on this contract. I know they've been associated with ASME for 40-plus years, and for them to become a collective bargaining unit, save money in their pockets. I think they've realized that we can all come together, we can agree on things, and that's what the negotiations are for, and they can represent themselves. So, to me, that's a long way that they've come between the county and the union, so I'm thrilled. They were great to work with, the board is great. So, yeah, I think this is a really good step for. So yeah, I think this is a really good step for Highway.
Great. Is there any public comment on this item? I will say too, when I was out there the one time, everybody was respectful and they realized that we had to come to some agreement. And they were, they were quite good to work with, from my perspective.
Right.
Yeah. So I applaud them. Is there any public com, I did call for public comment on this one, didn't I? Yes. Okay. So with that, I'll call for a vote on the Highway Workers' Collective Bargaining Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the RQAW feasibility study for the current county jail, fund name and fund number to be determined in the amount of $40,000.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell again.
Yes, and this is kind of a, an outcrop of two different ideas. One is when we got our jail studies back in, I think, 2021, we had public engagement meetings, but they weren't noticed as public hearings. And Indiana Code 3611819 requires a public hearing to discuss the feasibility. And those reports were also much broader than just the jail feasibility. They included some, you know, the courts, they included the community, and so it was, it was much broader. And it's 2023, and it just seems like society has changed more since we, since we contracted for that first, that first study to now than it had changed in my lifetime in that short of a period of span. So what we wanted to do is get a pure jail feasibility study that would comply with the code. We wanted to use a vendor that was not the one we were chosen to utilize for the, the design of a new facility, because we had heard from the public and that there may be, that they would consider that potentially a conflict of interest. And we, we don't want even the appearance of impropriety in this. I think we, we think, and then when we get this back, we will have a public hearing to discuss it pursuant to the state code.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
And will RQAW present the information at that public hearing?
Yes, I believe they will.
Okay. Great.
And it looked like to me that this would be about two months for this to be completed?
I think typically that. Sounds about right, but you've got to remember that the next two months involves a lot of time when people aren't working. So you've got Thanksgiving, you've got Christmas, you've got New Year's. So I don't want to hold them to two months. I'd rather they do a thorough job and get us a, a report that has been well thought out and reviewed everything, as opposed to trying to push them through, you know, the holidays to, to get something accomplished.
I just didn't want people to think we were going to have this back in two weeks.
No.
This is complicated.
Yeah, they've outlined eight working weeks. We'll call it eight working weeks.
Right.
They've outlined eight working weeks of tasks that they, that they will complete. And, and it's not a hard and fast deadline either. They propose to complete the work based on that schedule. If something comes up, it may be longer.
Well, and part of it involves interviewing folks and stuff like that, too. So it, it can be complicated with things.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But I appreciate the fact that it is a different company.
Yep.
And that's somebody that actually does work on jails. So they have a better knowledge of this than just a general contractor, I think. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. I just had a question, or maybe a couple of questions. And I think that Mr. Cockrell went a long way towards addressing the kinds of question that I have. But I just want to observe that there have been several calls for a really serious examination of the possibility of renovating the jail as opposed to building a new jail. I mean, you're, you're, that's not a surprise to anybody that I'm saying that. So there, there've been calls for that kind of analysis that, so more detailed than what was in the consultant's report from two years ago. So my question is, is this study that we're paying for now, does, is that going to assess in a specific way what it would cost to renovate the jail under various scenarios? Or is this something else entirely? And the other question I had was, you know, is, it came as a surprise to me that there's a statutory requirement that this happened. And that could be just because I, I missed things. But I don't remember anybody mentioning that this as a requirement. And so I'm curious to know, has this been discussed all along and I've just missed it? Or is this in fact something that someone caught and said, oh, we actually need to do this thing to cross the Ts and dot the Is? That's, thanks.
Mr. Cockrell.
Yeah, okay, if you don't mind. I, I guess question one, the whole point and the whole genesis of the statute is to have somebody look at your current facility and see whether it is feasible for it to be continued in use. So that is clearly part of the, of the, of what, what they're going to do. So it is to address that question. State code requires that question to be addressed. The second is, I would say we, it was, it was always known, and I think it, when we were going through and did the first study, we thought that would accomplish the goal of, of, of counting for this type of feasibility study. I think, but when we had the public meetings, they weren't noticed as a public hearing, so those wouldn't have qualified. And then as we went through the process, and myself and particularly as we went through the zoning process with the city of Bloomington, heard from a lot of people that, hey, this study, we're reading this study that, in my mind, was clear that it was indicating you need a new facility. They're reading it to say something different. And so, you know, we want to be able to, yes, cross Ts and dot all Is, but also make sure we have all the information to make the appropriate decision. And so when the public says, we're reading this a different way, this is a way to, you know, kind of confirm one way or the other, what the answer to that question of whether this, whether our current site is feasible moving forward or not.
And there's both the structural feasibility and the financial feasibility that would go with this, correct?
Yes.
Is there any public comment, any other public comment on this item? I'll come back to my colleagues. Anything else?
No, I do think it's, it's important to do this, especially with a different company. As, as you noted, Commissioner Githens. And this is a way to address any questions that are still out there about whether or not we can renovate the current site.
Thank you. With that, call for a vote on the RQAW feasibility study for the current county jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the RQAW Service Agreement for Convention Center Improvements Fund, named ARPA, Fund Number 8950, not to exceed $103,750.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell again.
Yes, and I think this replaces an agreement that you, you approved a couple of weeks ago. That agreement contemplated a third party doing the, a lot of the bid work and the bid review. And it contemplated us having a separate contract with that, with that group to do that. For this project, we sat down and, I sat down with Richard and Angie, and it just didn't make sense. We asked RQAW to revise their agreement to provide those services. I think it basically has a $15,000 increase. And again, this is for the engineering, design, and inspections for the current convention centers, the replacement of the heating and cooling unit, which is long overdue, and the replacement of their, I believe, freight elevator, which is, again, long overdue. I mean, I, I know we're talking about a bigger expansion there, but I think these are critical components that are, are going to be needed, no matter what happens with, with that other project.
Right. And it might be a year or two before that expansion occurs as well. Just to get it done. I mean, yeah, I think we're moving forward on what we need to for that expansion. But any comments or questions on this agreement with RQAW?
I'm just glad they're able to move ahead with this.
And I think they're going to do a great job. And yes, we have to maintain the current convention center, and I think it's a testament to our faith and belief in the convention center that we're continuing to invest public funds to maintain it.
We're lucky that we have the ARPA funds, I think, especially because there truly was lost revenue at the convention center during the pandemic. So, yeah. Pleased that we can do this. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the RQAW Service Agreement for the Convention Center Improvements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the agreed findings and judgment regarding Vernal Pike Connector Right-of-Way Acquisition, Fund Name Westside, TIF, Fund Number 4920, in the amount of $2,755,000.
Second.
And again, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I will start off by saying that this, these, this funds has already been placed with the court, so this is an additional $2.755 million. What we were looking at with this, and we went through two mediation sessions, and it seemed to take a whole lot longer than, than any of us anticipated. But what we were looking at with this was a current business and being able to continue their operations. It took as long as it did because we were, we were, we, we believed the facts to be different than what they were. And so that $2.755 essentially represents what the appraisals had determined was the, was the cost. And again, the bulk of this cost was how do they change their building site so it can still operate? And so, you know, it, honestly, this all had to do with, can a semi-truck make a turn or not? And we thought they could, they thought they didn't. We, we went to the site, we had a survey out there, and I'm not convinced the perfect truck driver couldn't make it, but we don't design anything we do for the perfect driver. So, you know, totally, once we saw that and got that, we totally got to it. And this was a result of a mediation where we didn't necessarily feel happy about leaving it. We're pretty sure they didn't feel, necessarily feel good about, about where it ended up. So we think it's probably a, a fair resolution, too.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I'm just glad to see this project moving on.
It's time to get this moving. Yes, agreed. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on agreed findings and judgment regarding the Vernal Pike Connector Right-of-Way Acquisition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the Lockmueller Group, Inc., Task Order Agreement for Stip Road and Morse Creek Road, Fund Name Stormwater, Fund Number 1197, in the amount of $229,300.
Second.
And we have Ms. Ridge here.
Good morning. This task order is for project management, construction inspection, and utility coordination for our Stormwater project, for Stip Road, Morse Creek Road, drainage improvements. The original on-call contract that we have with Lockmueller Group was approved in 2019. So this is the task order to connect it to that original contract.
Questions, comments?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas, any public comment on this? I thank you for moving forward on this, Ms. Ridge. And also, I assume that Ms. Satonia was involved with this as well, so kudos to her. With that, a call for a vote on the Lockmueller Group, Inc., Task Order Agreement for Stip Road and Morse Creek, Morse Creek Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-43 to amend various traffic ordinances.
Second.
Again, Ms. Ridge.
These items were presented to our Traffic Commission Board and at the October meeting, and they were unanimously approved and are warranted through the MUTCD. We are amending 8609, which is our speed limit ordinance, to eliminate the 40 mile per hour speed limit between Curry Pike, on Curry Pike, between Profile Parkway and Vernal, and changing that to 35 mile per hour. And then also eliminating the 30 mile per hour speed limit on Prairie Green Court, lowering that to 25 miles per hour. And then we're also amending 00-31 to add a no-turn-on-red location for eastbound and westbound Jonathan Drive at Curry Pike, eastbound and westbound at Profile Parkway at Curry Pike, and eastbound and westbound on Vernal Pike at Curry Pike.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I've just been wondering for years why Curry Pike was 40 miles per hour there. It seemed a bit excessive.
And it'll still be 40 from Vernal Pike on out to 46, but it has a different aesthetics going out that way. It's a little bit more industrial, a little bit more sporadic. So that's why we just changed it to the Vernal Pike.
Commissioner Thomas? Seems like you're looking out for the safety of, of our residents, so I appreciate that. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2023-43 to amend various traffic ordinances. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of N.D. Change Order Number 5 and Number 7 for sample road phases 1 and 2, Fund Name Sample Road, Phase 1 and 2, Fund Numbers 8161 and 8162, in a credit amount of $29,878.55.
Second.
And again, Ms. Ridge, to tell us about money back.
So we changed our striping from thermo to just paint. It's going to be up to the Highway Department to maintain those markings at the completion of the sample road on the east and west side. So for funding purposes, we could not see spending the extra funds to put the thermo out. When it will not be maintained with thermo, it'll be with paint. So that just is a cost for us on the overall project at that point, for that item.
So one more thing taken care of on sample road.
Yeah, we're, we're working. We've got a couple more change orders and such to go through that'll probably be coming to you. I did want to actually tell you that on Old 37 North, that project, I think it's been advertised as opening in December. It is our goal for that to be open next Wednesday, and then that will also eliminate the light at Bethel Lane and Bolting House Road. So just to let the public know that it's changing that traffic pattern out there. But again, we're a month and, month and a half of opening it a little bit early. So I wanted to say that before I forgot.
Sweet. Kudos.
Questions or comments? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on N.D. Change Orders Number 5 and 7 for sample road phases 1 and 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of an amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act, American Rescue Plan Act Plan. I was right. With the addition of the following items, funding to support Who's Your Hills Food Bank, $100,000, funding to support Pantry 279 Thanksgiving Food Distribution, $65,000, funding to support the food box distribution of People's Market, $48,000, funding to support the needs of the community kitchen as they open an additional center, $400,000, funding for Monroe County Health Clinic's gun violence prevention efforts, $40,000, funding to support the construction of the Summit Hill Childcare Center, $700,000, funding to expand the Smart Start Program of Community Foundation, $200,000, additional funding for improvement of septic systems in Monroe County, $200,000, additional funds to support rural housing repair in Monroe County, $200,000. All of this is contingent on the Oak on the okay from Baker Tilly regarding restricted funds or lost revenue.
Second. This is just, I'd like to say one or two other things, too. As County Council considered this last night and voted in favor of all of these items, this total is $1,953,000 of some of the spending of American Rescue Plan Act money. And if you go through these, most all of it is either for food or for childcare, two great needs in our community. As I indicated last night during the County Council meeting, there's a huge gap in childcare availability within our county. There are estimates that we have a gap of probably 50%. We're only meeting about 50% of the needs for childcare. And so doing anything at all to expand that, I think, is important. And the item at the Summit Hill Childcare Center is not just childcare. There's, we'll be focusing on childcare for infants and toddlers, which is where the greatest need is right now. But the second floor of the building will also have three affordable housing apartments. So I think that that also, again, addresses another need in our community. The Summit Hill Childcare Center costs, it's a multi-billion dollar project. This is only part of the funding for that, but this will help them complete what they have set out to do. So with that as additional explanation of some of these things, is there any comment or questions from my colleagues?
I'm just very pleased that we are all in agreement that these are great projects.
Absolutely. Great, great projects. Can't say enough about everyone.
Well, and we had a public meeting on Monday where we met with our County Council colleagues to discuss these things. We know that there are other things that we do need to address and we intend to in the future. But these things, some of them are very time sensitive, especially when it comes to the food that's needed in our community. And so I'm pleased that we're able to move forward on this as well. Is there any public comment on any of these items? I see we have someone online. Lee, would you please go ahead and introduce yourself, first and last name, and let us know whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County?
Hi, I'm Lee Groan-Daper. I'm a resident of Monroe County. And, you know, I'm going to ask the same question that I asked at the meeting last night, which is, a while back, you have Resolution 2023-26, the Monroe County ARPA subrecipient plan. So I was just wondering, are these subrecipients or just recipients? And will they be subject to the same plan as the subrecipients if they're not, they're recipients? Thank you.
Mr. Cockrell, do you have?
Well, I'm trying to think, because I think some of these will be subrecipients and some will not. I guess in my mind, I, you know, I think when we look at the housing and the septic thing, those are going directly to the end user, which is, makes it not a subrecipient. And some of them will be going to a group, and I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me right now. So some of them could be going to a group that is then going to disperse it to someone else, and then they would be a subrecipient. The subrecipients will be part of that subrecipient plan, which includes looking at the organization, seeing what level of risk we have. And so I guess the answer to your question, some will definitely not be, and some probably will be.
I think also last night, there was a question about how other organizations could apply for some of the funding that we have available. And we have a process. We have to know about what the needs are. We don't just pluck these things out of the air. So did you want to say something, Ms. Purdy, about that?
We already have more proposals than we have funding. So I don't, you know, and for a couple of years, we've been talking about this. And so I think, you know, I don't know how to respond to that.
I think that the two bodies, the two political bodies, Council and Commissioners, need to, once they finalize all the projects that are currently before you, would then determine if there's actually anything left. But at this point in time, I believe we are actually trying to reduce projects so that we are not over-expending dollars that we don't have then.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have a deadline of the end of next year. And if it's not done by then, then we're going to cut a check back to the federal government.
Yeah.
So we need to have things obligated by the end of next year and expended within the two-year period after that. And so that's, seems like a long time, but it's not.
It's not. There's a lot of information to put together on each of these projects, and then to have Baker Tilly review them. I mean, it's not a quick process, and in a way that may be frustrating for some agencies who really need assistance. But on the other hand, that really helps ensure that we're doing the right thing with the money and that we will not have any problems with an audit later.
So I don't see any other public comment at this time. So with that, I'll call for a vote on approval of the update to the ARPA, or American Rescue Plan Act Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you to everyone for that. I was hoping to make an appointment today, but there's still a question about something related to that because of stuff that we have to be aware of. So hopefully next week, we'll have something ready for that. I want to go ahead and make announcements. The times for early voting are Mondays through, Monday through Friday of this week and all of next week, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., both this Saturday and Saturday, November the 4th. Voting is available from 9:00 to 4:00, and on Monday, November 6th, at 8:00 to noon. All those are at Election Operations at 302 South Walnut Street. For those who wish to vote on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November the 7th, that will be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. At your specified precinct or voting polling place. While there's been a little bit of confusion this year about voting, this is a year for municipal elections, but also any resident that lives inside the MCCSC catchment area, there is a referendum on the ballot for you to vote on. So that, we just need to make sure that people understand what that looks like. There is still COVID testing available at the Monroe County Health Department at 117 West 7th Street, and also at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissions at www.co-monroe.in.us. You can also go to that same website to sign up for Monroe County alert notifications. And also at that website, it lists when we have virtual office hours. We hold six of those every month, and you just click on the calendar, and you should be able to find where to join up. We do have more blood drives coming up. The next one is Wednesday, November the 8th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Friday, November the 10th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Again, in December, on Wednesday, December the 13th, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Friday, December 15th, from 10:00 to 3:00. We have extended with the cooperation of the Monroe County Council, we've extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying for rent or utilities. These are, you have to be income qualified, but please, if you're struggling, please contact your township trustee. Every resident has a trustee. And finally, remind everyone that October 31st, next Tuesday, is Halloween. The hours for trick-or-treating are 5:30 to 8:30 throughout the county. That includes within the town of Bloomington and Elletsville, and I believe also Steinsville. So do any of my colleagues have any other announcements?
I want to put Ms. Ridge on the spot. Sorry. I do, I didn't bring it with me. I thought I had my paper with me about how, I think there's still another week for people to submit comments on the State Road 45 N.D. piece. Could you give a little info about how folks can find that info and how to make a comment? Thank you.
Yeah, so we do have that posted on our website. I believe it's on the homepage of the www.co-monroe.in.us. It is for the State Road 45, 46 bypass N.D. project. So if you want to make comments and see the plans, then I would suggest doing that before the deadline next week.
And this is the expansion or reconstruction of 45, Route 45, between the bypass and just a little bit east of the intersection with Pete Ellis Drive slash Discovery Parkway. And then there's some, a little bit of also change on Pete Ellis and Discovery Parkway, right?
That is correct.
Right. On the website, it's called Legal Notice for Public Involvement. And the date on it is October 19th. So that's where to find it and all the information's on there. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So with that, we will adjourn. We do not have a work session today, and we will be back on Wednesday, November the 1st. See everyone then. Thank you for coming.